Brief agenda for us to start some discussions. Figure we probably wouldn't get too in-depth today. A good place to start. Really appreciate everybody making effort to get out here. I did hear from Barbara Young, she would've been here, but she's still a little much away today. And I did not hear from any other trustees, whether they intended to attend or not. You should all have in front of you our brief agenda for the day. And also, the document that, I guess it was the last trustee meeting, was handed out for discussion about potential items to be listed as responsibilities for the Finance Committee. I believe most of these came from our work session where we all went around and wrote on the board's what we thought we ought to be looking at for financing the various other committees. So, I thought we could start today with a discussion of what we believe our role should be, so we can take back to the board the recommendation for that.
Okay.
So, I guess we can work down the list and add to and take out as we go. As thoughts, please chime in. Obviously, you can all read this in front of you, so no real need to read it to you. Oversight obviously makes sense for a Finance Committee. Working with staff, primarily the Director, and developing the budget, my kind of take on that, in fact, I think I might've been the one who wrote that on the board, was helping to define the priorities of the Board of Trustees, make recommendations of where we should be focusing, early in the process of the Director and his staff can then figure how to, what the cost of those priorities might be, and how to implement them, and so forth. Obviously, I think the Director and his staff are well-equipped to develop a budget, but by being involved in the development early, we would know more about it and can speak more intelligently about it as, as time goes on and folks ask us questions and so I think accompanying the Director for any of the public hearings or funding requests to the governing bodies probably makes some sense, have somebody from that locality to attend, and if nothing else, show support, and then, as it says, help to report back to the board.
You know what'd be helpful to me, and maybe to everybody I don't know, is that I know this is all based on a, there's a predictable calendar when this stuff occurs. If we could-
It is, and under our meeting schedule, I figure we would talk about, if we're going to assist with the budget, when do we need to have our meetings to-
Yeah, I mean, just with each of these, each of these bullet points here, I would love to know if it applies, what time of year we should be doing this, otherwise, this stuff will just get lost in the soup. Because I, because I'm new, I don't know what the typical calendar is, so as we go down them, it would be really helpful, or maybe we work or figure this out, but-
Why don't we understand what you're saying, think it makes sense? Why don't we work on what the responsibilities are, and then we put together a committee timeline of when we need to be focused on various things?
Perfect.
Rather than try to do it piecemeal as we go.
Makes sense. Thank you.
I'm not sure what, I think I know what they meant by monitor compensation. Somebody believes we should be surveying other libraries, I guess, to see what their compensation scales look like, to make sure we're in line? Not sure that's something that we, as members of the Board of Trustees, would do. I know, at least in my experience with my locality, every few years, we do a compensation study, and tell council within direct staff to either work on their own or work with a consultant to develop that compensation study, to bring back recommendations.
Yeah, one of the things that, in that regard, John, though, is you're monitoring, this one here is a bit puzzling to me, because what is the comparative zone that you look at when you evaluate the appropriateness of changing-
Right.
-the compensation rate for the locality? I used to do that with my staff, and I would look at all the nonprofits within the District of Columbia region, certainly not New York City, or Chicago, or Los Angeles. So, I'm sure that the same situation would be here, with the Southwest libraries being a lot different than here in Central Virginia versus Northern Virginia. And, I don't know how you do that. Do you just select a certain group that-
When we've done it in the past, we've looked at Central Virginia primarily, including Henrico, Richmond, Chesterfield. Hanover particularly looks at those for all of theirs, and I think Goochland also looks, you know, looks towards the city. You get farther out, and they kind of tend to pick different ones. On a regional basis, we, if we're including them or considering their information, Central Rap, in Fredericksburg, Jefferson Madison, in Charlottesville, and Williamsburg Regional are sort of on the outer edges of our sphere and our libraries to look at. There's a regional library that serves New Kent and Charles City County, and they're not comparative, so we don't, we don't look at that information.
Well, is that specifically a role we feel like the Finance Committee, monitoring of the compensation? I mean, I think that's part of the budgeting responsibility, so I don't know that we need to call that out. Our responsibilities.
I mean, it seems to me that it's just to check that the compensation is within the reasonable boundaries of that area?
I think so, too.
To be, I guess it makes sense to be well-versed in, what determines the compensation? Is there like a-
Well, ultimately, we do-
Is it the market that determines it? I mean, is it the, is there a compensatory board that-
Right. So, there isn't a comp board. The library has its own salary scale. You have to remember that the library is the employer, not Goochland County, not Hanover County, or King &amp; Queen County. I think that's been one of the frustrations for King &amp; Queen. They tend to not pay people on their staff a lot of money, and we have to pay everybody the same, branch manager in Goochland, and branch manager in Westport, branch manager in King &amp; Queen. That pay rate for that position is the same regardless of its location.
That's sort of like the federal government. Once that pay rate is set at a certain level within a pay grade-
Well, it's, it's based on the fact that the job duties are basically the same.
Right.
And so, you pay people the equivalent. PRL has what I would say is a long history of not really negotiating, you know, starting salary. We start people at the bottom of the scale, unless there's something really exceptional, I guess I'll say.
Right.
But that is, that is historically how that has worked. We do some study, and at least in my experience, we've worked, like with Hanover County, with their HR department, on some of the positions that might be more comparable. IT positions come to mind, because everybody has IT, but Hanover doesn't have librarians working for them outside of PRL. That's a really looking at what is going on with the other localities to look at. When, we readjusted our pay scale two fiscal years, two years ago, because of the increase in the statement of wage. And I would say that the comp plan needs to be updated at this point, a couple of years out, but it's likely wrong, not on a percentage basis.
And I don't know that it is every year, but every time you look at that, but King &amp; Queen at the time was not considering additional pay. King &amp; William was not either, and then the library budget being brought to them, there was adjusting compensation. And that's where the stalemate, I think, was with King &amp; William that year over the budget, that and somebody didn't like hotspots. And we were able to work through that, but they were looking at, at least what I was hearing, was, well, our employees aren't getting a whole lot of raises, and you're doing a compensation study. And I was contentious. But unless you get all the localities on the same cycle for doing that, whenever the library does it, it's going to be off-cycle with somebody.
Yes.
Okay. Your next document on the bullet list was to educate the board on finance, financial issues. Seems to make sense, that that's our responsibility.
Would that be a separate workshop? Or is that a part of the meeting? How would we actually do that? How does that work?
I think we could do it as part of the meeting.
As part of the meeting?
As issues came up that we need to talk about, as we're working on the budget, we could say, you know, we understand this, I'm working with Tom on the budget, this is why we're asking you to do this, this is why the Finance Committee's recommending it, during those budget discussions. There may be an issue that is so large that we do want to ask for a work session.
I think that that information tends to be more of a bullet point level. I mean, like state aid, there really isn't federal aid for the library, but state aid is a significant portion of that, and I generally just keep the board up to date with that throughout the year and throughout the legislative session.
So, that's more just a, here's how much we're going to get, kind of thing? There's not much-
Well, typically, we would let you know what the library world, I will say, is requesting. State aid is calculated based on the funding and the formula in the state code, and they determine what the amount of state aid is on a need basis, based on that code of Virginia, on the formula there. And then, we have to convince the legislature to fund it. They don't automatically, you know, give us a million-dollar increase, because the amount of state aid that is needed has increased. We have to, we have to lobby and fight for that every year.
So, how do you do that, Tom? How do you, is this, is this based on a compilation of all library systems presenting their requests to-
Again, so the code of Virginia, it is stipulated that the Library of Virginia is the administrative function for that.
Right. So, they're the ones who have the lead in carrying this message back to the legislature?
They have the lead in calculating the need. That funding is not part of, it's a pass-through for the Library of Virginia, and the Library of Virginia Board is not opposed to it, but they are not the strongest supporters of that. They have their own priorities, quite honestly, with the legislature. So, the Virginia Library Association does have a lobbyist that they hire, and their lobbyist carries our message forth. In years past, I typically am asking those of you who are on the board to contact legislators, particularly ones that are in our region, that have coverage of our citizens, and I think they have influence in the process. It doesn't help us to contact somebody from Tidewater or Bath County or wherever-
Right.
-if they're not a part of one of the influential committees in the process.
Is it always a battle?
I would say that it is. It's, there's, it's state politics. It's gone all over the place in my time at PRL. This past year, we had asked for two and a half million dollar increase. The political fight between the House and the Senate for, you know, direction on how the state budget went was interesting.
Is it usually write-down party lines?
No.
No.
Really?
It has, it has, it has a wide swath of how it works.
Interesting to see that.
So, who in the state is, well, how does it plug into the state in its budget? The state aid?
Well, it's part of the Library of Virginia's budget, which is part of the Department of Education's budget.
Department of Education budget. And so, you need to find key actors who like you there.
I will say that that approach doesn't particularly work. We've done that to Ms. Lemon's point. I mean, we've, we've worked with Democratic governors, Republican governors. They don't tend to want to support libraries in the governor's budget.
Right.
We've worked with secretaries in the Department of Ed, and of course, we're a very small part of the Department of Ed. The total amount of state aid is less than thirty-nine dollars.
Right.
So, we tend to use our influence in the money committees, so we can make a difference.
Right.
So, what happened with the 2.1 million increase? Or 2.5?
2.5. So, the, I'm kind of doing this from memory, but the House, the House was pushing, putting a lot of money in reserve and not spending as much. The Senate, I believe, was trying to spend a lot more, and I believe it was in the Senate budget, they amended our amendment to make it be five million dollar increase. And the House lowered it, and then they had their skinny budget, which was something that was new, that we'd never had before. So, at the end of the fiscal year, on June 30th, we really knew what was going to happen. Remember, they came back in the summer, and the budget got fattened up, and we ended up with over three million dollar increase in state aid.
Very good ask for 2.5?
Yeah. So, that was, that was sort of the best case scenario. Worst case has been, you know, being cut.
Okay.
But generally, it's, you know, talking about that, that our, whether our amendment has been submitted, asking you to contact legislators if they're in the service area particularly.
Okay.
Virginia politics is very local, and if the Chair of the Finance Committee is from Tidewater, they're probably going to say, it's nice to hear from you, Ms. Lemon, but I don't cover Goochland.
Even though they're making decisions that do affect them?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, absolutely. Okay. So, moving down to the next bullet point, it was work together with the Director on reserve fund, make sure allocations are in line with long-range planning. That certainly makes sense. Access to financial statements, that's the one that I haven't quite understood. Having access meaning, was presented with the balances? I don't think we want direct access to our accounts. I don't.
Hanover County keeps, they're the fiscal agent, right? So, this is all Hanover County accounts? Is that correct?
So, the library no longer has any bank account, or what was an investment account with LGIP, which is part of the state's Treasury Department? But yeah, we no longer have any accounts like that.
I think that gets stricter.
Well, no, I believe that we should have access to-
The information.
Warrants and deposits.
Right.
I'd like to see the deposits.
Which is presented every month.
Yeah.
Right.
Deposits.
Yeah, we've never, I mean, we've never done deposits, but-
Just the warrants.
We can show you those. I mean, they are listed in terms of the increases in the revenue side of things, but-
Well, you know, balance sheets, I think, are a good idea, and just knowing, just in general, what's going into the reserve fund and where it came from. To me, that's, we should know that.
Yeah, and the same thing with their investments. I'm not quite sure where they are and why they're there, and not that I'm going to make any difference about what they do, I'd like to know.
Well, it'd be interesting to see even the unrealized gains and losses.
Right. I'd just like to know about the philosophy of this county and how it's investing money and how you're-
Well, because I'm getting asked questions from my board, and I have no clue. Like, how is there, you got a question, how is there 3.1 million dollars in the reserve fund? I don't know. Well, where'd it come from? I don't know. So, I mean, I'm getting asked questions, and I need to be able to give a reasonable answer, and I don't feel like I can do that.
Some of that, hopefully, we can, when we get to the reserve fund discussion today, we can talk about where that came from. I think Tom has those answers.
Excellent.
Explain that. But I don't know that we're, if we're going to continue to ask Hanover County to handle our investments, I don't know that we're going to change the way they do it. And if we want to do it ourselves, we can do that.
I'd just like to know what they're doing and how they're doing it, and what the results are.
Not asking for change.
Just for information.
Just asking for reports.
Information.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's worthy.
I mean, Hanover's going to do what Hanover does, I, that's not my business, but what is our business, though, is to be able to be cognizant of what's going on financially.
If it's good enough, I might try my own investments there.
There you go. Okay.
Receive explanations for expenses over a certain dollar amount. Example here was 10,000. Can we, sure, do that? We'll talk about that in a bunch here.
Yeah, I don't know what a reasonable amount would be, but that, that's kind of standard for a lot of these organizations I've been a part of. Over, it's a lower number, it's usually, but-
Yeah, like I said, mine was 5,000.
Usually, it's 5,000, yeah.
But this doesn't really surprise me. I mean, the budget is 6 million now, your budget?
Yeah.
Sounds like a reasonable number.
I mean, there's, as, as we learn, the monthly warrants and such, that we know, we come to expect that, what is it, Overdrive, whatever Hoopla and Libby, is that, one of those is, Overdrive is Libby, is that right?
Overdrive is Libby.
Those guys are usually pretty expensive, but-
Well, we do receive the monthly warrants, which, you know, include those expenditures.
Correct.
Can certainly ask questions about them.
Agreed.
Contracts.
I mean, I think this, this would be very helpful, and to understand the contracts, because when I got my first warrant list, I had no idea. I had to Google almost all of them, just to see who they were, what they did. I had no idea. So, it might be helpful, especially to new members and such, to pick, well, just have a vendor list and definition. This is who they are, this is what they do. I just think that would be very helpful. Because in doing so, you learn a lot more about how a library works, which is very interesting, so.
Accept gifts on behalf of the board and initiate thank you from the board. What does that process get in the past?
I mean, you learn about gifts that are substantial. We don't typically note lesser ones to the board. People, the library is much different than the rest of your local government, in that we regularly get donations from somebody paying their fine while we're talking here today, and it's 75 cents, and they'll hand you a dollar, and you tell it to, you know, the quarters of donation.
I know something about that personally. I might know a little bit about that.
You know, ranging, ranging upwards to, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars, which we generally note to the board, like you know about, but I don't think I've ever had a board member do the thank you. We've always done this administratively.
I was going to say, it seems like the thank you would come from y'all. I don't think, it seems to me-
It would.
Yeah, I mean, it seems to me, so-
Think we can just take that off the list?
Yeah, I mean, you guys would let us know, and-
I mean, obviously, if somebody's willing to donate a few hundred thousand dollars, we should recognize that. Maybe that's worthy of some presentation at a board meeting or something.
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's a good suggestion.
Unfortunately, when it's in bad amount, yeah, it's-
They want to keep it on the down.
They're deceased.
Right.
But, if we were doing a big capital campaign, and somebody made a donation, we'll make sure we recognize that. Understand and oversee expenditures of the organization. I think that was what we talked about earlier here. Make sure we understand the warrants, where it's going. Personnel costs, sure. And so, we are essentially saying, other than one minor exception, we agree with the list that Barbara Young put together and asked us to look at.
Yeah, looks pretty good.
Okay. Tom, would you give us an overview of our budget? I guess where we are today, the current budget, and the budget request the board approved at the last meeting to make to the localities, so that we make sure we're up to speed and can answer, ask you questions, and hopefully, you can answer anybody's questions as well.
So, to go back to Ms. Sloan's question, sort of on the timeline, generally, in the fall, we are providing budget requests to the four localities. They are all on different schedules, so generally, Hanover is first, and all King &amp; Queen is with us, they are generally last. Hanover usually would like to have that information in the middle of October, which has proven difficult in years past. The library board generally hasn't approved a budget until their October meeting, end of October, which I would say the Budget Office has kind of gotten used to, but that is the timeline. And then, Goochland and King &amp; William get their requests delivered sometime in November, October, November. King &amp; Queen has typically sent the information, you know, here's how to submit your budget request. They generally send it right before Christmas, and have it due like right before New Year's, kind of a later period there. But that's the timeline for submitting them. The next process, the counties are then working to produce what will become the county administrator's recommended budget, just like the library director kind of presenting a budget to you all, the county administrators will present a budget to their board supervisors- The county administrators will present a budget to their board supervisors. Following all the different evaluations that we're talking about. What do we need to do for, for pay, benefits, services? Are we changing services, increasing services? How are we gonna find that stuff? And the county administrators will generally present their budgets, I would, I would say, in February, February into March.
And that is, when they present their budgets, the barrels and portion of that, you're just saying that that's just part of that?
Part of what they're, what they have in their budget. Generally, there is a line, the, um, like topical, um, area of the locality's budgets is, it's kind of like cultural. Parks and Rec and libraries are together in that area in everybody's budget because of the way the state does its things. But yeah, there would be a line in there for funding for
Is it just one line, or is there any explanation?
Um, they generally have, you know, a brief paragraph, you know, what is, what, what is PRL? What do we, what, what does it fund? What do we get from our contribution? And a single line with the contribution.
I need to look at that.
Okay.
And then, the counties go through a process of public hearings. You may be familiar with, they'll, they'll do a public hearing on their tax rates. They will do public hearing on their full budget. They will do presentations, depending on what local interest is.
Is this at the committee level in the legislature?
This is your local board supervisors, you know, county level.
And this is happening in the spring?
In the spring.
So, we're gonna
So, I think it's safe to say that all four counties, the board supervisors will hear from their public safety folks, and they will hear from their school division. They may or may not hear from anyone else, just depending. In Hanover, I would say it's about every three years that we end up presenting a budget request to the full board of supervisors. In Goochland, I would say we present nearly every year, but they do that as, I guess I'll call it a team presentation. They'll do what they call their human services agencies. So, I'll, I'll, I'll be given a few minutes the same night that Goochland Cares is given a few minutes. Social Services, CSP, et cetera.
Okay.
In Goochland. And then, in King William and King and Queen, they usually have an evening that they hear from what they consider their outside agencies. Bay Transit, Legal Aid comes to mind. I'm trying to think who else is on that.
That's usually there.
Community Colleges are, yeah, so. And that, um, I'm trying to think. And King and Queen, I think they have gone to the point of saying it's, it's optional if you'd like to come. We go anyway, but theirs is, theirs is supposed to be optional. I'm always happy to go to King William and talk to them about things. But a lot of times, it's less formal, so. In Hanover and Goochland, there are meetings with staff and finance in order with county administrators, so.
Okay.
Those typically are done in the fall along the lines of the budget request submission. Face to face there. After the counties have their public hearings on like rates and the budget itself, I wanna say it's at least a two week, but it might be a month, if you remember. The, the counties have to have their budget advertised after presentation before they can approve it.
Can't approve the budget until at least seven days after the book.
So, so they're generally
They have to approve it by the end of April, at least the school portion of the budget. They can wait till whenever to approve everybody else's, but they generally do it by the end of April.
Thank you for your help. So, it's a, nine of the 12-month process. I'll put our budget up. There's a rewind there. I think the other stuff at the top will go away. This was our 24 budget. I actually didn't do the 25, I'm sorry. Can you probably pull that back up? It's all my fault.
So, right now, we're, forgive my ignorance.
No, that's fine.
So, right now, we are talking to them, or requesting about 25 budget.
25.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, that would be starting July 1, 24 through June 30, 25.
Yes, correct.
Okay.
So, we are currently in the 24.
We're in the 24 budget right now.
July 1, 23 to June 30, 25.
Okay, thank you. I, I, for some reason, I always get that stuff.
I did pull it in. I have a little bit of fiscal year bogginess as well. So, I have a drawing line.
I just like, I like fiscal years to end on 12/31. I like everything to end on 12/31. When it goes mid-year, I just keep, somebody's like, bring King in on it.
Sorry. So, y'all, y'all did approve the budget. And, you know, we've given it to, to Hanover and to Goochland. Need to send some stuff back for King William. But Hanover, they've, they've taken a look at it. We are not asking for anything different in their world. And we don't have a, we didn't even have a meeting this year with budget staff and the county administrator, because it's a pretty minimal change with all of them in terms of what we needed for health insurance and what we needed for 5% merit, which is where they were at on merit. I don't know what to say if there'll be a public presentation to the board supervisors. And I would kind of say that in at least three of the four localities, because everybody has a significantly different board of supervisors. So, I think it's likely to happen. But everybody only has so much time, and the library is about 1% or less of their, of their spending. And so, I could see that they may not end up spending time here in front of us. I, you know, like I said, I don't know that for sure, but that would be my guess. And had the meeting in Goochland with the head of finance and the county administrator. Mr. Carpenter's always, his standard, his standard response is every, every year is a tough year so far, which is fine. I, I don't expect anyone that we meet with in the fall to say, absolutely, I can guarantee you're gonna get this month, you know?
They don't know that point.
We're, we're just there to say, this is what we're, what we're doing. Explain, answer any questions, and, and, you know, kind of keep moving. I put that in the slot here with my, right next to my HDMI, so I've got two things competing here. I'm sorry. Everybody knows one or the other. But, um we're always presenting the previous year, so this is what, this is the approved budget. What, what we had proposed to staff with our changes. And, and we provide that back to the localities. They ask, well, what do you need more money for? Everybody's asked, what's going on with King and Queen? So, you know, that's an opportunity when we have, have the meetings. Pretty good to share my sense of the Excel version of this.
Yeah, you do.
You do, yeah.
It has, it has all of our payroll information, how we calculate that. It has our shared pieces, and I have these in paper if you want to see them again. You know, that's kind of hard to read. But, but that's the way the, the budget is developed.
Tell us a little bit about how you calculate the percentage that each locality owes for shared service.
Hope you brought your readers. So, um the shared service piece is allocated to the localities on a per capita basis. And we calculate the, down here at the bottom. You will see underneath telecom, there will be a shared subtotal. So, 2.7 million dollars of the proposed budget is to fund shared services. Most of it is in personnel and materials. We use anticipated income that we receive from state aid, fines, charges for service. That would be like photocopying, printing, et cetera. Income from items that get lost or damaged, that people pay for. There's $15,000 in this budget for investment income that is being used to offset those shared costs. Other income, $105,000 here, you know, in terms of reserve. And then, $22,000 is expenditure or refunds or year rate. So, we take those off of those, the costs, and what is left, like, we need to have kind of cash money for, as you will. And they get allocated to the localities based on a per capita basis. What is your percentage of the population in the entire region? So, in, in this example, for FY25, King and Queen has allocated no population because they're no longer anticipated to be part of the region. Hanover is the, is the greatest, and that hovers around 70%. I think it's, mathematically, I think it's 72 here, looking at updated numbers from the 2020 census.
So, all of the state aid is applied to shared services?
It is.
So, all of the cost for operating the branches are borne by that local?
The, the people that keep the branch open, utilities?
Yeah.
I mean, I guess, in, in the broader sense, they're, they're sharing those costs.
Entirely, yeah.
And, of course, the formulas change in from here to here. I think I told this story before, when I had first started, trying to, you know, pick up the budget, trying to make sure that I'm, you know, counted everything, looked at everything. And so, you know, the first year it was fine, and the second year, I'm like, well, do we update the population and change? You know, would, 'cause there's nothing, there is, there, I'm not gonna say there's nothing, but there is no real rule or policy procedure for how you're supposed to do that. I've suggested that if they do come up with a new contract, that they delineate that. If we, you know, I don't know if you wanna use
Do you do it every 10 years, it's new census, or do you use projections?
Correct, yeah. But, but what quickly became clear to me was, you don't wanna make a change here, but then there is sort of an unexplained, you know, whatever dollar amount change, and we're going back to Goochland saying, well, this year I need, we need $20,000 extra, and it's just because your population changed. Nobody wants to hear that.
Right.
And then, next year, you might not know that because of somebody else's population.
Yeah, yeah. So, um, you know, so these numbers are based on the 2020 census. These were based on previous, and there are changes over the 10 years.
Okay.
But again, allocating is differently, adding, adding to somebody's burden, decreasing burden, it's all kind of, you know, kind of a wash. That's, that's the shared piece. With state aid, state aid is not without any strings attached, if you will. You have to agree to, basically, their rules for the state aid. You have to tell them what you're gonna spend state aid on. We could get lotted on it, hasn't happened in my experience, but we could. And state aid in this budget is projected to be $586,320 for FY25. And historically, the library has allocated state aid to books and materials. It makes the record-keeping pretty easy. We've been doing it that way. We literally have, you know, a budget line for books and materials state and books and materials local. And when we have used all the money in state, then we no longer spend from that, and we spend it from the local. But it's a nice, clean reporting for us that way. You, you can spend it on other things, but there tend to be more rules related to that.
Can I ask an ugly question? If you don't, if you look like you're not going to be able to spend all the state aid, what do you do? Find a way to spend it?
You spend it.
Okay.
So, the books budget is like 700,000?
Right.
Yeah. And, and I will say that
But you do keep track of that, so you don't lose it, right?
Correct, correct. I mean, we, we, we start on July 1, allocating our expenditures to state aid. So, we know that we have spent it by, I'm gonna say, no later than the end of February, if that makes sense. The collection is one of those things that is, it's, like, it's easy for us to spend some more money there. People will use it. We can, particularly with the digital collection. I mean, we, we can, we can spend that, and it can be available to customers. I wouldn't say maybe later today, but like tomorrow.
Almost immediately.
Yeah, almost immediately. If you're buying a physical book
That's smarter.
And you buy it, you order it on, I'm gonna say, you know, June 20th. It might be here in your hand by June 30th, and it, and it might not. And if it's not, then you didn't spend it in fiscal year. So, sort of, sort of the same with staff. If, if I, if I had somebody who was out because they were sick for a couple of weeks in July, beginning of fiscal year, we'd probably cover that with somebody else, and it's gonna be really hard to catch up on that, you know, sort of, so to speak, if they're here, kind of. Kind of, it happens when it happens. It doesn't, we can't, we can't staff the branches twice as much at the end of the year for June because we're trying to spend the money down that way to govern the resource. Whereas spending on the materials, people will use the material more, so. But that's, that's the shared stuff. Do you have questions about anything in here? It's good. I've got the shared sheet too. We've got a line for each branch. A line for each branch. The middle section, we, um, add the branches together if we're in a locality that has multiples to show what the locality is gonna need to cover for us. The salaries pieces off of the payroll spreadsheet, that calculation.
So the money that comes from each one of the, the counties doesn't go to books and materials, right? Am I getting that straight? That state aid covers that completely?
No, state aid, it, it does not. So here's state aid, and so, um. I'm not reading this upside down.
Books and materials is projected to be a seven hundred and sixty-five thousand dollar expense.
Yeah.
So, but we got, okay, we got three million in state aid?
Three million?
Well, statewide, there was a three million dollar increase in state aid. It gets distributed to various public libraries across the state based upon their portion of the calculated state aid.
Gotcha, okay, so three million was the whole pot, and it got spread out?
That was the increase in the whole pot.
That's not PRL's portion.
That was the increase in the whole pot.
Yeah.
What was the whole pot?
Um, it's about twenty-seven million dollars.
Okay, so twenty-seven million is divided up. And then, okay, and so our portion of that twenty-seven million goes to state aid, I mean, goes to-
Comes to us, comes to us as state aid.
Comes to us as state aid, and we spend it on books and materials to keep clean, okay?
We're budgeting six hundred and forty-eight thousand twenty-five dollars of state aid, for state aid-
Right.
Toward books and materials.
And our books and materials is seven sixty-five one oh three. Okay, so that, so then the locations divvy up the additional-
Yes.
One hundred and some thousand. Got it, thank you.
I didn't hear the last portion of what you said.
Oh, the difference, yeah, the difference is covered by the, um, localities.
That's, yes, that's what I was just gonna try to say.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Sorry. Are there, do you have any questions about any of the branch, branch stuff? So, um, I guess, you know, yet to come this year, um, we'll see as the county administrators are doing orientation with their boards, they'll probably be working hard to develop schedules on what, um, what departments they'll want to hear from. If you start to watch this, like, in the, you know, Guchlin Gazette, not the Guchlin's local, Mechanicsville local, you'll probably see, yes, they're, they're gonna hear from the sheriff, they're gonna hear from fire chief, they're gonna hear from the superintendent of schools.
Everybody's making their bids for money.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, I mean, schools is generally about half of what people are spending, I believe.
Generally below that, but yeah.
Yeah, um, so that's a significant portion, public safety is a significant portion.
So Tom, of the increases to Guchlin, Hanover, and Kingwood, those are attributable to cost increases and the fact that King and Queen is no longer funding a share of the shared services?
Right. Correct.
So that's, that's what the seven, five percent, eight percent increases.
Yeah, on the, on the shared, on your shared panel, um, we went down- we went down these, and the ones that we could, um, make a cut based on not having something for King and Queen, we did. Like salaries and benefits, which is the biggest section here, one point three million dollars. There was no cut from that. I don't have, I don't have a vacancy that's gonna be there five percent of, of that. But we could reduce the amount of supplies by five percent because we're not providing paper clips and bathroom cleaner to the branch anymore. So, um, so some of that got made up by, um, by those reductions.
You said there was no cut on personnel, there was a cut on the assigned personnel cost to King and Queen went away, but with a five percent personnel increase for salary adjustments, there was still an increase in personnel.
Still an increase in personnel.
And the decrease in rent, that's Montpelier, isn't it? The twenty-nine thousand nine seventy-six?
We, yeah, we are anticipating that, that to be a decrease as an expense and not a decrease in revenue from the camp. When we moved into the new Atlee building, we had this former space that was, you know, pre-telecommercials phase. And, um, we retained the funding for the rent to be able to use for more staff than we needed in the new branch.
That's right.
That was, at the time, with different county administrator, different board supervisors, different staff and finance, that, that was agreed to, I would say, to, you know, to be carried forth with Montpelier. But that's been several years, so we'll see. But that is within what we proposed, and we kind of noted that that had been precedent while we were doing that. Nobody told us, you need to redo it. So we'll see. But that is what that is for.
Okay, thanks, Tom. Anything else on the budget overview?
Yeah. I had to slide to the reserve. My shade is not as good on the screen, um, but I'll, I'll kind of go over those. At, at the end of fiscal year twenty-three, um, we had two million five hundred and fifty-six, two thousand three hundred and seventy dollars for our funded balance. The question is, where does that come from? That comes from surplus funding that we've gotten over decades, literally. It was about a million dollars when I started, um, and, um, I was told that that primarily came from, um, Rockville branch projects. The Rockville branch was given to Hanover, given to PRL. And I'm drawing a blank. Jamie, the Cochran, um, the Cochran family that moved over from Trucking. He grew up in the Rockville area, and he and his wife, they gave an initial donation that built the branch. And there was a second donation that added the meeting room on, which is named for Mr. Howard, I believe, who was Mr. Rockville's very close friend. But I, I was told that that was where the bulk of those dollars came from.
So, but they, they built, they built the branch, and then they built an extra room, and there was still an extra million?
Uh, there was, there was like eight hundred thousand-
Left over.
Well, in the reserve, and what I was told was the, the bulk of that came from that. But it also comes from, you know, any year that there's a dollar left, basically, out of our operating. We, the library retains that because we're a regional government. Just like, I'm gonna say, just like your locality retains the funding that they don't spend. They, you know, I paid taxes on my house, my vehicles, you know, just, you know, just like you do. And, um, the county will produce a budget. Let's say they're gonna spend, you know, forty million dollars on the things that they're spending the dollars on. If they spend thirty-nine million dollars on it, they have a million left in reserve. So, we, we're in the same boat. We have used that from time to time, and we've been trying to get it spent down to a lower level. And the designation of the reserve will reflect that. We can talk about how, how that works. But, um, in the last year, as we mentioned this earlier, I'm gonna say at least when we approved the budget, last year we had a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar request to Ashland. We had about a hundred and forty thousand dollars in federal funding that we had applied for to provide hotspots, um, in, in computers for the public that we expended the money in the previous fiscal year that came to us in FY twenty-three. So there is a big increase there. I can, I can tell you, there's a quarter of a million dollars more in revenue in this current fiscal year, FY twenty-four, that we wouldn't really have been able to anticipate on July one. The same gentleman that provided us with a very generous request towards Atlee, Timberlake family. They, it's in the Rutland subdivision, Rutland is the name of their family home. The last, the last two Timberlegs, brother and sister. The brother included PRL in his will. He died suddenly, so it came to us a little bit sooner than expected. The initial check was four hundred thousand dollars, and we ended up putting that, we, the library board ended up putting that money towards the county's project at the time. The county had bid the building, and it was, there, the estimate, um, was twenty percent under the bids came in. So there was a huge gap.
Which, which branch was this?
The Atlee.
The Atlee branch.
But timing is everything with construction, and if you're building and bidding and hot market, you know, you'll pay for it. So yesterday, there was in mail, an envelope from Edward Jones, and there was a check for a hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars, which is what is left of Mr. Timberlake's estate that is coming to us. There, it was, there's no real note on it. The note, the note on the check from Edward Jones was that they had issued it at his sister's request to us, and they mailed it to us at our post office.
So that goes right into the reserve fund?
No, it does not. And I think one of the things to say about the reserve fund, the reserve fund is a, um, like a philosophical design. There is no bank account that is the reserve fund. It is what we have in excess at the end of the year, measured on June thirty.
But, so we don't, where is, I mean, where is three point one million dollars?
It's in our general fund, our general account.
And, and that is held by Hanover County.
Right, but-
How much do you anticipate from the standpoint of their investment strategy for you to earn on that money? Did that goes back into your reserve fund, or does it?
So, it, it, well, it, earnings, um, come back to us, and, and we also pay for losses.
Right.
The, the way that the county has their, um, investments set up, it's, it is possible for there to be losses. There have been years where we have not gotten additional income. When, when we were not in, you know, invested is not the right word, when we were not partnering as heavily with Hanover County, the library's reserve was in the LGID local government investment pool. That's a service that the state's treasurer offers to localities, political subdivisions. They invest the money in very, very, very secure investments. Very low likelihood of a loss, and, um, your earnings are, um, to match, match that risk, if you will.
So where, where does the hundred and seven, the check that you got, where does it go?
So it gets in, it gets deposited into the Hanover County account. We take it to, it happens to be in Wells Fargo. Ken took it to the bank this morning, um, and then we watch and make sure that the treasurer's office allocates it to us based on, on-
And where would they, where would they allocate it to? I think that's what Bart was asking. Where do you see it show up on your bottom line here?
Well, it, it won't show up on our, like, on our bottom line so much in this until you go to reallocate the investment, but it will show up.
It'll show up as revenue.
It'll show up as other revenue.
So it'll show up as other revenue?
Yeah, on, on the monthly board report.
So this did not come with strings attached, that, that one seventy, whatever it was, was not, they did not ask it to be committed to any particular branch or use? It's just going into the general fund?
Well, I believe that it would come with the same, um, stipulations that the first four hundred thousand dollars came with. But that was, um, with, um, the intention that we would have a, a local Atlee history collection. And four hundred thousand dollars or five hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars only makes the, the issue worse. We would never be able to spend the dollars on that, which is why when we had this huge gap in the construction costs that needed to be filled, the library board chose to use it for that. We did talk to, um, to, to Ms. Timberlake, so that she, she knew that, and she was okay with it. She, she did not want it to just be sitting around, you know, and not being used. And the conference room upstairs is, recognizes her family, and we have some historical things related to their family there. But there really isn't an Atlee history, so to speak, to, to really provide information about. Atlee history's gonna be included in county history, which is included in state history, and there is no real need for us to duplicate that. We already have Virginia and the collection at, at the Hanover branch of the courthouse, like we're in Janus downtown. So, so kind of without strings, but I would suggest to the library board that you would allocate it to go back to Atlee, which was part of their intention. So- So, you can see we already have ninety-thousand dollars here in the committed line that should be used for Athley. That was the money that was donated to us by the Athley Friends Group. When, when the building was being bid and the, the contract was being awarded, one of the big things that they had to do was called value engineering. And you take as much out that you can to cover, you know, how much you paid for at the time. So, the building was supposed to have a lot of outdoor features. The north wall was all glass. There was supposed to be more of a, a park amphitheater out there that was tied into the building and everything. I, I don't think that, you know, three-hundred-thousand dollars is gonna build that either, but I, that would be our recommendation. We try to utilize that money in that way to make the building sort of whole like it had been, instead of trying to spend it, you know, like a hundred dollars at a time on a program. But those are decisions that the library board has to kind of come to consensus with. And then we'll have to work with the county to, you know, to, to make that happen because we don't own the building. That's, that's part of the change. There is a ninety-eight-thousand-dollar increase in FY twenty-four funding for state aid, which again, we didn't know about when it happened. But it's good news. So, state aid will, it's six-hundred-and-sixty-two-thousand-five-hundred-and-nine in this town, FY twenty-four.
How much state aid's gone off?
This is, this is an older file because that number wasn't there. It's, it's about a ninety-eight-thousand dollar.
And is that because there was an extra three million allotted? That's our little portion of that?
That's, that is coming from follow-up when the, the budget went from thin to thick. Yeah. And so, we will need to amend the budget. We, I will say staff, it's our preference to not do that, sort of change by change, month by month. Much easier to sort of do that maybe one time instead of twice or monthly because it'll really be confusing if you, if you do it a lot. But we will kind of amend and get closer to where we're expecting things to fall sometime this spring. But again, that's, in this year, it's two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars in revenue. We've, I don't think we've ever had a year where we had two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars in unanticipated expenses.
So, at the end of the year, any given year, this number fluctuates based on what we've allocated to be spent out of the, in the fiscal year.
Yep.
And what we actually spend.
What we actually spend.
And what other, either unanticipated revenue surpluses there were or over expenditures there were, would reduce it.
Yep.
So, that becomes the audited number at the end. That's what we have.
Right, so it's just a, there's no count. It's just a, like a spreadsheet.
Right, it's, the money is in our, in our bank account. And this is at the end of the year, this is what the auditors come up with and say, there's your, there's your June thirtieth balance. What's in the account?
Yeah, I mean, we're...
And then we say, these are the things we hope to spend in order in the future.
Correct.
And do we get quarterly reports or something about the...
I think that the county does quarterly allocations on, on the investment return. Is that what you're asking?
Yes, yes. Like unrealized gains and losses, just kind of where it's at?
Yeah. The, Ken, Ken does some reconciliation on that. The Hanover County, I'm not saying it's regon or indifferent. They don't like to show any kind of bank fees or investment fees. So, they net those fees against the return. And that's what shows up in, like in their reporting. But we, we have enough access that we can see how they're doing that in general entries to have, have an idea of what their, what their expenses are and things.
Okay.
And sort of related, from budget to reserve, for the sake of argument, let's say the budget is just six million dollars each. We're not gonna spend six million dollars on the nose, right? It's kind of like when you, you go out with your spouse and you're like, we're gonna buy a new sofa and we think we could, we've got a thousand dollars for it. Well, it's gonna be nine-hundred-and-eighty-nine or twelve-hundred. It's not gonna be an even thousand dollars. And we're, we're really the same way. And we try not to overspend unless we've already let you know that that's what we're doing because we're trying to spend more out of the reserve. And generally, within about two percent, about a hundred thousand dollars is where it gets really uncomfortable for us to try to bring it in closer for June thirtieth. So, I say that because, I guess, I mean, you could have a different opinion and tell us to try to do differently if you so choose. But that's the way that we've been operating for the past several years, trying to get close, like not, not...
Traditionally, has the library board used their reserve fund for sort of one-time expenditures? And that's how we use our, our fund balance. In the town, we're trying not to use ongoing operating expenses funded with fund balance because it's one of these days you're gonna run out of one-time expenses.
That, that has been what we have tried to do, kind of what I learned from working with various auditors over the years. It's, you know, is, is, is to use it for something that you don't have funds otherwise. But don't be paying salaries out of it because of that. And I think it was in fiscal year twenty-one, we used money from the reserve to, to cover everyone's increases because at the time you were doing the, the budget request, like, the federal government had not come up with all of the ARPA, all of these COVID, you know, related recovery programs. And so, we said, you know, we've got the money. We're gonna use our own money, still funding raises and covering, like, health insurance increases. But not asking the localities for the funding. Like, we clearly communicated that and did it. And, because the problem for that is the next year, now, if you need five percent, now you're gonna need ten percent. I mean, the, you know, the, the costs have gone up even though you funded it for, for the year. And of course, they all like it the year that they didn't have to pay for it and they don't like it the year that they do. It, it is a problem that way. And one of the things that we've done, it is, I would consider it in the category of the one-time expense, but this admin center, what are, what's gonna happen with that? We don't have space for everyone, didn't have space for everyone. And so, you know, we lease the offices over here in Clock Tower. The rent does average a hundred thousand a year. And that's what we told the localities. We said, this, we're, we're using this money, we're covering it now. We're not expecting to ask you for it, but this is what we're doing with it. And we're expecting to spend down, you know, at the end of the lease, a lot of the reserve so that we have a permanent home. We, we purchase real estate or have something built so that we don't have this as an ongoing expense.
Where, where was that decided? Where, because I couldn't find it in the minutes. I found in July of twenty-twenty, Hanover was not in favor of a new building. And then I, I've been looking and trying to figure out where that was decided. There was a, let's see, in July of twenty-one, it said that there would be finalized information about reserve fund use in the September twenty-twenty-one minutes. But when I click on the September twenty-one minutes on the website, it pulls up the April twenty-two minutes. And so, I couldn't look at...
I don't, I don't know about, I don't know about the website. But the library board has consensus for it to do that.
I just need to see where that is.
I'll be happy to go back.
Yeah, where, where the library board decided to, to build a building or buy land or something. I, I, yeah, I just need to see where that happened.
I, I don't, I don't think that they had, I mean, nobody decided to buy land or build a building. They've decided to use, use this money to pay the rent for the lease for the five-year period. And this money to do something with so that at the end of the lease period, we have the space to move to. No, I mean, nobody has decided what that's going to be.
Okay. So, it's never been decided that there's gonna be land or a purchase of a building or anything like that? That's not literally been decided? It's just been assumed? Is that, am I right on that?
Well, it's, it's been assumed, I guess, or approved that we're gonna use what is the bulk of the reserve to address this need for the office space.
But that would be, I mean, ultimately, to spend that money, that would be board decision?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So, that's just right now, it's just...
It's set aside for that purpose.
It's set aside for that purpose, but it's not been approved? In other words, it's, it's an assumption?
Well, it's approved, but it's not specifically designated for a certain action, Barbara, it looks like. I mean, he's, he's, this is going to help him decide how he's gonna manage a location for his office.
Right, right, I understand. I'm just trying to, to get, like, where, where this was voted on that we were gonna have a new building. Because I can't find it. And so, so now I'm, I'm just trying to understand.
To be honest, I mean, I think it's within the, when, when the board designated the reserve fund initially to pay admin rent and to have a future admin capital project, that's their approval. And we had a similar discussion.
And I don't remember the exact meeting, but I do remember since I've been on the board in June of twenty-two, we've acted to adopt this plan.
But it's not adopted until it's a board vote.
Is that adopting?
The board voted on it.
But it...
A brick and mortar building?
No, to adopt this plan for allocation of the reserve fund. That's all that's happened at this point.
Oh, okay, I see what you're saying.
That's all that's happened.
Yeah.
Nobody has said, we're gonna buy that piece of land over there or we're gonna buy that building over there.
So, this, so right now, this, the spreadsheet basically has been approved as future admin capital project, future branch capital, okay. So, that I understand, that I understand. So, to go to the next level is another whole discussion.
Where the board would approve appropriating the money.
Gotcha, okay.
I'm making it up. We're gonna spend four-hundred-thousand dollars on this four-acre lot.
I understand, okay.
You know, wherever it is.
That's what I needed to understand is that this is approved and just laying out the spreadsheet and kind of assuming or thinking the money's gonna go to a future admin project. But nothing has been appropriated and decided.
And in each year when we approve a budget, well, the board, I assume, approved the lease for the space. And then each year, we approve a budget that has a rent payment in it.
Right.
Yeah, right.
But at some point, hopefully, we're gonna be in a position to approve, we're gonna buy that building and move our admin staff in it or we're gonna buy that piece of land and build a building to be there so we don't keep paying rent.
I think...
That's the thought.
Right.
It might be the board says, we're gonna keep spending rent.
Ken, sort of similarly, because like, you're kind of very literal here from what I'm hearing. So, you, you as a board this year, you can't approve this expenditure in, for three years down the road. The board, three years down the road, will have to do that.
Why is that?
Because that's when the appropriation would, would take place.
Oh, because that's when, that's when the lease runs out?
Well, I mean, you can't obligate the board in three years to spend that money.
Correct. But what, what's the three, I'm sorry, what is the three-year?
Each year, you adopt the budget and appropriate the funds for that year.
Correct.
We haven't adopted a budget or appropriated a funds for FY twenty-six or twenty-seven.
So, twenty-six is the next one. Twenty-six is the next one.
Right.
So, gotcha, yeah.
So, this is...
So, the next year that would...
This is a plan, a map, you know, to, to get that. I mean, you know, you have, there are, there are thirty-four months left on the lease.
How many?
Thirty-four.
Thirty-four.
Just, you know, double checking with staff and everything before this meeting. So, at the end of that timeframe, we're gonna have to do something. And of course, if you're building, you're gonna have to do that two years before that. You're gonna have to start, what is the land that we're buying? What are we designing? What are we building? Where are we going? So, it's, the, the clock is ticking on that pretty quick. You cannot wait the thirty-four months and say, oh, what's gonna happen?
So, you have to make that decision soon.
Yeah. And I, I mean, I guess it's, it's possible that you all decide that you want to continue leasing, but I suspect that your lease payments, your rent payments are probably going to double just based on all the other inflationary costs that we have. It's five years later in a real estate market that still is moving. The building is, when we moved in, the building was probably fifty percent occupied and it is nearly full. I, you know, but, but there will be a need.
To do something.
Yeah, need to do something.
You're out in, let's see, thirty-four months. So, you signed the lease in September?
We, we signed it in the fall. There were renovations that took place and we ended up occupied. Most of this took in, in January of twenty-one.
So, but the lease runs through, what, of twenty-twenty-six?
I can't, I can't do the, not, not think what is thirty-four months from now. I, I mean, it's, it's twenty-three, so it's gonna be...
So, it's like the end of September of twenty-six?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Okay, so approximately the end of September twenty-twenty-six.
At, at the time that we went into this, we, I also was talking to Hanover County to make sure that they knew that we were making these plans. And Mr. Poduski was here at that time. And he, one of the things that he said was, well, we might be able to fit you in a backup at the county complex. The Hanover County, as far as I know, still has plans to build space for their registrar. The registrar, besides office space, they have to have a place where they store their voting machines that is secure and appropriate and all of that. So, you know, that, I'm gonna say, that might still be an option to, you know, put our, pull our money with them. They're seventy percent of the operation anyway. That would be a good location. Prior library boards have wanted the library office to stay on the campus for Hanover and be a part of that environment, kind of not be out of sight, out of mind. But I haven't heard anything more about that as a project.
That they would build, not, not, you would, you wouldn't go into space that they already have? They're, they're adding on?
They do not have that space. They would have to build it. And at the time, I believe that the thought was they were gonna be building that at the courthouse.
Okay. That's interesting, I didn't know that.
People and plans change. But there was a lot of discussion about all of this. Yeah, the, and actually, the board did not actually approve the lease. I mean, I, I negotiated, signed for the lease. I guess hard policies say that the director has that authority to do that. But there was plenty of communication along the lines because it kind of, it really took forever. We're still working that out, et cetera, trying to get us fit in.
Still working out your space like that?
At the time, it took, it took multiple months to come to an agreement to lease that space. How that, like... And how that, like, how that transaction was structured. So I was letting the board know every month what was going on with that.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
So, and, you know, at the end of all of that, and these years that are in the gray, might as well be written in pencil for what it's worth. You know, but that's the plan.
It's a plan.
To spend down, use the money for library needs, be not burdening the county with needing to come up with funding for either a building or ongoing for lease, rent, however you wanna phrase it.
Okay.
Thank you, Tom. About a brief update on where we are with the audits?
'22 has still not been issued. We last heard from Cherry. We've returned their questionnaire related to their findings. Mike Reinhardt emailed on November 15th and, you know, said they would try to issue within the week. Had not heard from them. I come, I sent him an email and asked him for a status update and have gotten no response to that yet either. That is kind of holding up what work we can do on the '23 audit. What, one of the things that I have done is contacted the accountant that the Hanover finance have suggested might be able to help us. Her name is Ann Schaber. We've had a couple of phone calls. I have a proposal from her. She's, she charges about $185 in an hour. She, she lives in Roanoke, so she would be working remotely generally. She's willing to be on-site if need be. They pay for her travel mileage hotel per diem, which is all laid out there.
How, how did you find her?
She was recommended by the head of Hanover's finance department. And Ms. Schaber has, I'd say, about 30 years of experience in local government finance.
But there's nobody local that we could use?
I, I mean, I checked with the one that they gave me as a, as a referral. She happens to do the town of Ashland's audit for them. So, I mean, she, she, she does do work, you know, kind of all across the state. It seems pretty reasonable from, from what I know and what Cherry was quoting as to do similar service.
And this is to help with financial statements, right?
Right. And this is, you're, you, it's pay as you go. You know, if you need her help, you're paying, unlike Cherry's, which was a flat fee.
How much was she? Hundred and?
She quoted $185. Her contract says that she reviews it, she, she's self-employed. She reviews it, like, she'll have one every year.
Yeah, seemed reasonable.
It's pay as you go. I, I felt in, we, we spoke for probably 45 minutes the first time that we talked. Kind of, I've got a good feeling from having spoken with her. She has worked with the folks at Mares that are doing Hour 23 audits. She has past experience with them, have worked in a relationship, which would be.
That's helpful.
A good thing to have going into this.
I mean, does she really need to, do you, do you anticipate she'd need to come on-site very often? Or is this something that you would be comfortable remote?
I would, I would, I guess I would probably suggest that perhaps she comes when the audit is issued. Is it coordinated when they, when they, when Mares is here to present it? But in terms of working with us, I mean, I, I think we can, you know, we can phone and examine collaborate with documents. I don't think that's that big of a deal. Not, not particularly needing to have that, so.
So, so with regard to the '22 audit, I mean, what is the sticking point? Is it still the capitalization issue?
Cherry has to issue the documents. I can't really say what they're, I'm sure they're gonna say they're working on other projects.
But they've got enough information to issue that document?
Correct.
And they've answered their questions back, or the responses to their draft findings.
There's, there's no legal recourse. There's no legal recourse we have with regard to that auditor?
No.
It's strange.
So the, the ball is in their court? In other words, they have everything they need and they just have to issue the?
They are not waiting on us.
Okay.
We frequently find ourselves at issue with our town auditors. It's their timeline. Give them a target and. Last year I was March getting an audit.
What was that woman's name again? Ruth? What was her name?
Ann Schaber.
Okay, that's not even close.
That, that is who you're asking about, correct?
Yeah, Ann.
Sorry.
Ruth? I don't know where that came from. I don't, I have no idea. Okay, I just couldn't remember. Okay, thank you.
I, I think it, I mean, at this point in time, I would say I'm planning to pick her. I don't see anything difficult in her proposal. We're not obligated to spend any more or spending anything with her, although I think it would be helpful. We'll take that through procurement to get that approved. And we'll sign it and send it back so that we have some additional help with the '23 audit. Try to get that taken care of ASAP, whichever is everyone's interest in putting staff. And, and we'll, we'll work to move forward.
Now, we do not have her cost in the budget though, do we?
We do not.
So how will we pay for that?
I mean, again, the budget's a plan. We know that there are parts of the plan that are already, you know, locked in terms of spending. We have money to do that, including for, I mean, if you had to, which you don't, a quarter of my dollars. And I just talked about, you know, it's being increased in revenue for this fiscal year.
Okay.
But there, there is enough surplus money in our personnel line to move, you know, five grand into contractual to pay those.
Okay.
And I say five grand because I think that's, I think that's what it calculates out approximately for 40 hours, which is probably more time than we would anticipate needing that.
Thank you, Tom. Committee meeting schedule. Obviously during times where we're working to fill up the budget, perhaps you may meet more frequently. But what type of a schedule would you want, would you like to look at? Every other month, monthly?
I don't know.
I don't know that we need to meet every month.
Probably every other month. Is that possible? And if we feel like we need to meet more often, we can certainly do that.
Yeah, right. I think that sounds good.
Well, what do we wanna talk about for our next meeting? I would suggest certainly well clear the first of the year at this point.
Well, is there a certain day of the week that is better for everybody? What is today?
Well, the week varies by the week for me, but.
Yeah.
It all depends what time of the day. If it's in the afternoon, I can probably do it anytime.
Is, is afternoon better or morning or?
If, if I might ask, I mean, it's sort of like working with this consulting accountant person. Would, would you like to schedule a meeting based on having something to meet and discuss? And perhaps do this with sort of on a recording basis to the committee? Because, I mean, the things that I have, and I may not have all of them, like, sort of flesh out the calendar for you on your budget process. You wanna see like a scheduled deposits and then the rest.
That would work.
Which, I mean, do you need to come back together for that? Or can we send those to you?
We can send them and then we can discuss it if we feel like we need to.
I think starting with you and trying to do that would be best, right?
So are.
Are we saying not schedule a meeting?
Do you wanna have a tentative meeting scheduled, just so we have something that we can, like in January? Wait, November, December? So today is the 28th. So end of January?
I was gonna say early February.
Early February?
And that way we probably will know what the budget hearing process will be in the localities. And some of your planning can be based on that.
Okay, so that you would suggest beginning of February? Are we, are you talking?
So if we're looking first week in February.
The week of the fifth?
What?
Right?
Yes.
Okay.
I could do one day. Pretty much any time of the day. I guess later in the day on a Monday is usually better, because you never know what's gonna happen Monday morning when I'm walking to the office.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm okay. Any day but Thursday of that week.
And I could do Wednesday afternoon.
Seven?
Seven.
Why don't we, um, you wanna try, you'd like two o'clock?
Two o'clock works for me. That gives, I guess, it depends on where we're gonna do it. Certainly somewhere centrally, so that, I guess you're about an hour, I'm about an hour to here.
For me? To here? Oh, no, it's like 35 minutes. It's not too bad though.
Fifteen minutes or so. So if we can meet somewhere in this area.
I'm, I'm retired. You guys are doing all the work and paying social security, which I love.
You're welcome.
I'm doing my best.
So let's say Wednesday the 7th at two.
Wednesday the 7th at two and tell us where's available?
Yeah, to be determined. Now, who, who?
We'll try to do that here in the middle between, if someone gets somebody with.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't really care. I mean, is Atlee closer? Ashland, is that good for you too, John?
That's fine.
What's that, which is?
Ashland or?
I was about to say.
Yeah, I really, I really don't care.
Here there is half, half of the room available at two for two to four. Check that.
Or Ashland or, I don't know. I don't care, I don't care. Two o'clock.
Are we thinking about here in Mechanicsburg?
Sure. Let's do it here, that works.
I don't care. That's fine.
We'll probably do this half of the room. I was guessing that whatever.
Is this a half of the room right now? Okay, this is.
Yeah, Atlee is, is on available.
Okay, so this room. Seven, seven to two. Okay. All right, that's good.
Anybody open for bringing the cookies?
Yes. Cookies, coffee.
Go get me charged cookies.
Actually be on the other side, but it looks the same.
It's a projector instead of a monitor.
All right.
All right, sounds good.
All right.
Anything else we need to discuss?
Nope.
Well, if not, I'll suggest we adjourn.
All right.